Appreciate your update, keeping us connected to what's going on in our schools. All right. Next is we come to the public participation portion of the agenda. I have one participant comment card from Ms. Tanya Lore. Are there any other comment cards to come forward at this time? I'm not seeing any. So Ms. Lore, we'd invite you up to the podium for public participation. And I know you've presented several times to this group and I believe you can attest to your familiarity with the content of Board Policy 187, correct?
Yes, I can.
All right. If any board member wishes me to read the whole policy, I am happy to do so without complaint. Hearing none, you indicate that you are an employee of the district.
I am.
All right. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. My name is Tanya Lore and I am a teacher and parent in the West Bend School District. I am speaking tonight as the president of the West Bend Education Association. The WBEA would like to share some numbers concerning teacher compensation in the district. We understand these numbers are not unique to our district as many are struggling under the constraints set by the state. But we also know that if these numbers persist, our district will continue to struggle to attract and retain qualified teachers for our community's children. The WBA recently analyzed the compensation of a 16-year veteran teacher in the district in order to better understand what has happened to the take-home pay of our staff. What we discovered was appalling. This teacher with 16 years of successful teaching in the district had lost $4,964 in total compensation to the cost of living in the last five years. Their take-home pay was nearly $5,000 less than it would be with a simple increase at the cost of living. Educators can't afford to keep teaching here. In the past, districts have been able to fall back on comparisons with others. Were similar to Slinger or were similar to Germantown was enough to keep people here. But we're not just competing with other school districts anymore. Teachers are leaving our district for other professions, professions where salaries can actually grow in purchasing power so people can afford to take on new expenses such as purchasing a home or having children. Teaching doesn't have the extra benefits other professions can offer either. There's no time and a half pay or holiday bonuses to help cover expenses. There are no company seats at Brewers or Packers games or holiday parties with free food and beverage. We also don't have flexibility in our schedules like other professions do. So we miss out-of-state weddings and seeing our children compete and perform in important events. We can't join our parents and siblings for rehearsal dinners or graduations. Heck, we can't even go to the bathroom when we need to. So why would anyone teach anymore? Our society is quickly learning that the answer is they won't. Colleges are struggling to recruit people into education. Districts are struggling even more to hire the few that graduate. We have to figure out how to improve the compensation and treatment of teachers before there's nobody left to teach our kids. We get it. Budgeting is tough when there are revenue limits in place. But sending children into classrooms without qualified teachers is even tougher and is a problem that needs to be solved before others can even be addressed. It doesn't matter what curriculum you purchase or what programs you offer if you don't have qualified teachers in the classroom to implement them. The district that figures this out first is the district that will attract and retain the quality educators who are left in the profession. The West Bend School District needs to make teacher compensation a priority so we can attract and retain, attract and retain these remaining teachers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right. And that concludes our public participation portion of the agenda. So we're onto our consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have minutes of the December 12, 2022 regular board meeting and the executive session, two contracts for consideration. We have no resignations, one retirement, and disbursements posted through December 31 of 2022. I'd move approval of this consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. We're onto the reports portion of our agenda and our first report, audited financials for 2021 through 2022, effective June 30th of 2022, and fund balance designation. And we have two individuals, Mr. Andy Sarno, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations, as well as Brian Grunwald. It's good to see you again. I think we saw you last year, if I recall.
Exactly, yep.
All right.
This is an interesting time, as I've shared in the past, from the point that we start projecting the next year's budget in November, that lead-in time, we have our 12 months of our fiscal year and then we have our audit wrap-up, 24, 26 months is not uncommon, a full span from beginning to end. So this is that culmination of the 2021, 22 audit, audited financials. Brian is here. Brian, you've been here a number of years. I'd be remiss if I didn't also thank Julie Marks is in the back table there. She's our district's controller. You guys should be familiar. She's been at a few meetings in the past. I'd like to thank her for her time and expertise. And it's not just Julie as well. Big team effort. We have folks in our food service department that have components in our grant areas. So as Brian will explain, a lot of different components of that. Have a brief presentation that Brian will share. I have one last component as well as to share a discussion. This is discussion only brought back in two weeks for approval, acceptance of the audit. I have a piece after Brian will be done of sharing fund balance designations. So recommendation for discussion, but happy to have you here. Thanks for coming, Brian.
All right. Well, thank you. And I guess I would start off by just echoing Andy's comments. I do want to thank Julie and the rest of your team for the cooperation and assistance that we received throughout the audit process. Certainly goes very smoothly from my perspective. And again, that's a tribute to the work and the effort that your team goes through in preparing for the audit. So thank you for that. In terms of the audit documents, we issue the audited financial statements and we also issue what I'm going to refer to as an executive audit summary. For purposes of tonight's discussion, I've pulled some information from both of those two documents and I'll walk you through that presentation here tonight. Again, if anyone has any questions as I'm going through the process, please feel free to ask. This first slide, just simply a reminder of the responsibilities as part of the audit process. Management is responsible for the financial statements. They're also responsible for the internal control, the design of the system, how things are done on both a daily, weekly, and monthly basis. Our responsibility as auditors is to express an opinion on your financial statements. We've done that and I'll talk about that more in a second. We do that by performing audit procedures. We also consider accounting policies and accounting estimates. And then in the last bullet point there, you can see we also consider the organization's internal control structure. Just want to highlight that. We do not issue an opinion on internal control, but we do consider and use that as part of the planning process for the audit. This next slide just gives you a summary of the different audit results. Starting at the top, the auditor's report on the basic financial statements. That is considered to be an unmodified opinion essentially means that I believe that your financial statements are complete and accurate and in accordance with our professional standards. I also just want to emphasize that that is the highest level of assurance that you can receive as part of the audit process. The middle section there focusing on internal control, again, as part of the audit process, we do consider the organization's internal control structure. We look at and discuss and review how transactions are processed, how you pay your payroll, for example, how you handle cash, for example, how you pay your bills. In terms of the communication relative to internal control, we do have two findings. You'll see those listed in the PowerPoint. The first one there, finding 2022-1, preparation of the financial statements. That is an extremely common finding. We've talked about that in the past. It is a repeat finding that you've seen in prior years' discussions as well. Essentially, that is to remind you that as part of the audit process that we as your auditors are the ones who are preparing your financial statements. And then the second bullet point there, 2022-2, just want to emphasize that is adjustment, meaning singular, to the district's financial statements. As part of the audit process, there was one transaction that we went through and reviewed. It did not affect your fund balance or your DPI reporting. What it did relate to is the actuarial studies. I should back up. As part of the audit process, when you have certain employee benefits such as post-employment, retirement benefits, or pension benefits, those are quantified by actuaries. So they go through a process, issue an actuarial opinion. As part of that process, we rely on that and they did make a change with regards to a supplemental pension and the liability calculation for that. That's really what's driving the adjustment to the financial statements and that is disclosed in several places within the audited statements. So again, that is the only adjustment as part of the audit process. And then the last section there focusing on compliance, that is really geared towards federal and state aid. Again, as part of the audit process, no issues, no concerns, no findings with regards to federal and state aid. Any thoughts or questions before I move on to the next slide?
So just going through the two findings, I do recall the one, the first one with regard to the preparation of the financial statements. And I have to say, it's one of those quirks of accounting that we say, the criticism is that we ask you, a CPA firm, to put our financials together. But I think the point is that another option would be to have the district do it and have you review it. And I think that's kind of, that's the point. I personally am comfortable with having an outside accounting firm put the financials together, but just wanted to get your thoughts on that if I'm characterizing that correctly.
Exactly. Right on. I guess in terms of the clients that I work with, just to put some perspective or context to that, too. I mean, we work with approximately 100 districts in the state. I work with 12. All of them are receiving a similar comment. It's more a matter of efficiency and us, again, we're familiar with preparing a document of this size and making sure that all the required content is included.
So that's really more kind of a technical disclosure or finding, so to speak.
Exactly. And we do ask that the district review and approve the draft before we issue a final document.
That's good.
Okay. Good question. Okay, this next slide, it's titled as the governance communication. This is really an overview. There's a letter that's included in that executive audit summary. It's actually on pages two through five of that executive audit summary. It includes information and bullet points that we are required to communicate as part of the audit process. So therefore, I just wanted to give you an overview of those topics. Certainly, as you go through that, if there are any topics that catch your interest, I'd be more than happy to go through those further. Again, very standard, consistent with what you've seen in the past. From my perspective, no issues, no concerns, certainly nothing that I would consider to be a red flag. In terms of the content there, the one that tends to stick out a little bit is the one in the middle labeled as audit adjustments. I just want to emphasize as part of that, that all adjustments that I'm aware of are included in your financial statements. So again, I do believe that those are complete and accurate. This next slide, I just wanted to give you a real brief overview of the single audit that again is focusing on your federal and state aid. The first bullet point there, want to give you some perspective with regards to dollars. Your financial statements report 8.7 million in federal funds, 38.6 million in state funds. From a testing standpoint, we do go through a risk assessment process. We do not test every program or every federal and state funding source. We essentially go through a risk assessment process that forces us to go through some rotation. I've listed the programs that we've tested in the current year, certainly with regards to COVID and what's happened with the child nutrition program and some of the changes with the COVID funding and free and reduced meals. We did emphasize and test the child nutrition cluster. You can see the other programs, federal and state programs that we've tested on the slide. And really, the point with this is, is I just want to remind you that we're following our regulations and requirements. It should provide some assurance from a testing standpoint. And again, as I mentioned earlier, from a compliance standpoint, no issues, no concerns, no findings or anything that needs to be disclosed as part of the single audit process. So from my perspective, again, you're doing what you should be doing with those federal and state dollars. And then these next several slides, I just wanted to move into some financial information and give you an overview of some of the key financial information. This first slide focusing on fund balance, focusing specifically on the general fund. I always like to look at trends. That's why you've got the several years of data included here. It gives you a snapshot of your overall fund balance levels at the end of the fiscal year as well as the different categories for how those are presented within your financial statements. Again, presentation as of the end of the fiscal year, I know Andy's got some additional information that we'll talk about as we move forward to 22, 23. You know, overall, when I look at this, the first thing that I always look for is how much fluctuation do you see within regards to overall fund balance levels? I see, you know, very consistent fund balance levels when you're working across a five-year period. At the end of 2021, you had 17,780,000 of fund balance. That did increase 94,000 during the current fiscal year, up to 17,875. And then in terms of the different categories there, there is additional information. I just want to emphasize this, on pages 52 and 53 of your financial statements, it gives you the detail and the disclosure for what's included in these different categories. The two that I tend to focus on are your committed funds as well as the unassigned funds. From a planning perspective, those committed funds are really where you have the opportunity as a board to step in and say, hey, we want to make sure that there's dollars set aside for specific purposes. You've done that. You can see the totals that you've set aside. Again, there's additional detail on pages 52 and 53. Of the balance at the end of 2022, the majority of that is set up for things like Jackson and capital projects and then also some self-insurance and employee-type benefits. Then the last category there, the unassigned, that's really from a benchmarking perspective, what really tends to draw a lot of focus because it is the category that's left after you've gone through the different categories, the restricted as well as the committed. It's available for contingency in working capital. Again, you can see your history there. That has grown a little bit from 11.3 million at the end of 2021, up to 12 million at the end of 2022. If we move on to the next slide, I just wanted to give you some perspective with regards to the percentages and how we typically benchmark that. So from a benchmarking perspective, very common to compare your general fund and your fund balance dollars, so that's what we have on this slide, in comparison to the amount of actual expenditures that you have flowing through your budget. Now, I just want to emphasize, when I refer to actual expenditures, I'm referring to the combination of funds 10 and 27. So that's what's presented here in the two different lines. The orange line focusing on your total balance, your total fund balance versus those expenditures, and the blue line focusing on your unassigned balance in comparison to those expenditures. Again, when I look at these categories and the amounts that you have here, you know, overall with your overall fund balance, very consistent with what I said on the previous slide. I see consistency moving from 2018 at 21.9% over to 2021, 22, you know, you continue to be at 22.1 and 21.9%. Overall consistency is the word that comes to my mind when I see that. And then again, focusing on the blue line, you'll see that unassigned fund balance level. And if you work across the line, you can see that 2021 and 22 have increased slightly over time, ending at 14% and 14.8% overall. Any thoughts or questions on that before I move on? Anything else you want to emphasize, Andy?
Brian, I think that presentation, that those numbers, those numbers all make sense. I was noting in here, I think that exhibit was supposed to be on page eight and there's a big blank space. So maybe we could just double-check that to make sure. I think it's supposed to be here where it says, "Five-year trend analysis of the general balance follows," and there's a large white area. So I think it's just a printing error. You want to fix that? And maybe I should be looking in a different spot. I'm looking at page eight of Appendix A of the summary report. And I realize this is discussion tonight, correct? So we've got, and again, the exhibit makes sense.
I see what you're referring to. We'll make sure we review that.
Yep, no problem. Just for the official final report.
This is the slide that should be in there.
No, that's, it's okay.
And then just moving on to the next slide here, just wanted to give you again a snapshot of your other governmental funds. Again, looking at the last few years, if you work down the slide, it's focusing on your debt service funds as well as your special revenue and capital projects funds. Debt service funds, including balances that are restricted for principal and interest at the end of the fiscal year. And I should remind you that it does include both your non-referendum and your referendum debt service funds. If we move into the special revenue funds, the food service fund balance sticks out. That has increased. That's consistent with what we've seen with all of our clients in the state. Again, really due to those changes with regards to federal funding and what's happened with COVID and free and reduced meals. So again, we're seeing an increasing trend in food service across the state. The donations fund, that represents your Fund 21. And then the last section there focusing on capital projects, the, and I do want to emphasize too, this includes your Fund 46, your long-term capital improvement trust, as well as your other capital projects fund. So total of all your capital projects funds, again, 6.4 million at the end of 2022.
I have one quick question. In regards to food service, so we understand that we had free and reduced lunch during '21, so we would probably expect to see that level back off for next year then as we get back to more of a normal cycle on food service?
Great question. That's one of the topics that I'll have after Mr. Grunwald wraps up. Because there are restrictions as it relates to Fund 50, which is our nutritional program. So there has to be something that's there for an investment into the program, being mindful of recurring expenditures, but an investment of the program that I'll speak about a little bit.
And the next slide, just wanted to focus on, again, as you think of your financial condition, certainly fund balance is a very strong part of that. Understanding your general obligation debt is another area that I like to look at and emphasize. This just shows you the trend of where your general obligation debt has been and you can see it in the reference to both bonds as well as general obligation notes. If I just focus on 2021, the total of the bonds and notes at the end of 2021, approximately 26.2 million. During 2022, you did issue 9.2 million of debt. That was a refinancing transaction and that was included as part of the proceeds and the payoff. And ending 2022, you did repay 23.3 million of general obligation debt and leaving you with 12 million outstanding at the end of the fiscal year. And then also wanted to focus on areas and again, benefits that are calculated by your actuaries. So this is focusing on both other post-employment benefits as well as the pension benefit piece. The top section focusing on the liability component, based on the most recent actuarial studies that you have, the other post-employment benefit liability is approximately 6.7 million. The pension, the supplemental pension liability, approximately 17.4. If you compare that to the bottom portion of the slide, the Fund 73 Benefit Trust, that fund has been used to accumulate resources to help pay for those benefits. That fund did present net position or equity at the end of the year of 6.1 million. And I do want to point out or emphasize that that balance, your net position balance, did increase from 5.8. did increase from 5.8 million at the end of 2021, up to 6.1 million at the end of 2022. And then this next slide, just as we look forward, I know every year, I feel like I come here and briefly mention a new governmental accounting standard. Last year, we talked about a new standard for leases that has been implemented as required. This year, in terms of effective for 2023, one of the more common or more impactful new governmental accounting standards is this statement here, number 96. It deals with information technology arrangements, and I'll continue to share information with Andy and your team, and we'll talk more about that to give them some planning opportunities and make sure that that is properly implemented as well. The fundamental aspect of that is really focusing on long-term arrangements and making sure that any long-term commitment is reflected and disclosed in your financial statements. So those be some changes with regards to that. And that is all I had prepared for you. Certainly, if there's any other thoughts, questions, or comments, I'd be more than happy to entertain anything that you have.
Great. Any questions? Again, this is discussion. We'll be bringing this back for formal approval next time, and I know you have some additional items to present, but any questions for Mr. Grunwald? All right, thank you. Come on up. Sure.
You're welcome to stay at the podium if you'd like.
Okay.
I do, this is something additional, and Mr. Grunwald touched on this. In designating those fund balance classifications, important in projecting for the future, setting some dollars aside where we believe that there's a future need. This is across all funds. Top section, again, for discussion this evening only. Any discussion will be brought forward into consideration of an amended document brought forward for acceptance at the January 23 meeting. These are those four different classifications, setting dollars aside, comparing the 2021/22 in conjunction with the 2223. So just some slight variances as we see those. Again, all a part of the audit process. Where needed, there are some different areas such as the committed Jackson Fund, where we still have approximately $1.5 million set aside in a reserved account for a future project. That's been something that the board has spoken about in the past. We've continued to hold those dollars. They're reserved, and then that action two weeks from tonight would continue to allow for that designation to happen, very similar to the $125,000 of the committed turf, that at some point in time, we will need to replace the turf at the high school athletic field. Those are dollars that were set aside for that purpose at some point in time. So these are all different dollar amounts. Again, as we're self-funded with health insurance, we have a health reimbursement account, an HRA, just dollars that are part of the audit, dollars that we've chosen to set aside. Bottom part of this document, not quite done yet. I'm going to scroll fairly slowly here by accident. These are all the other funds. So top section, Fund 10, four different categories. Bottom section, these are all our debt-related, both referendum, non-referendum, any other funds that are allowable to have fund balance carryover. So Ms. Justman, as you indicated, we do have a sizable amount within our Fund 50, which is our nutritional services department, the Department of Public Instruction. I don't know if that's a carryover from the USDA as well, the federal, but we have a requirement that we only carry over three months of operating reserves. So at this point in time, we have exceeded that, and this is with Mr. Dembski, the new nutrition director, coming in. We're seeing where we're at this year with participation. We set meal prices in the spring, looking at trying to make those investments. They may be a one-time capital asset or not purchasing regularly capital asset with equipment, other investments into the program, increasing some participation, growing the program, making sure that it's a sustainable use of dollars. But there is a requirement here within the next year or so that we are going to need to spend some of those dollars down to the threshold at a maximum as required by the Department of Public Instruction. Accurate?
Yeah, and it is something that the DPI does monitor. I guess I would summarize it as pre-COVID, if you exceeded that threshold, nothing from a compliance standpoint that they would start taking away money or penalizing you. They would really just contact you and say, hey, what's the district's plan? Make sure that you had an opportunity to work through and budget and identify what purposes you wanted to do with that. I would like to emphasize that post-COVID, again, with what we've seen in terms of trends and the growth in fund balance there, there's a lot of districts that are over that threshold. I feel like the DPI is going to have to come up with some correspondence and just make sure that there's some time to transition back to normal with both balancing meal prices and balancing participation in the number of meals served.
So question, do we have, can we use any of that for a capital expenditure? So say that we needed new refrigeration. I'm just pulling this off the top of my head. Or is it only for, you know, specifically for food or whoopsie, or, you know, some of those other things you're talking about?
It has to be used for the benefit of food service program. So if you'd say, we want to purchase a new oven or a new refrigerator, as long as it's for the food service program?
You're fine, okay.
Generally speaking, brick and mortar is not allowed. That would need to be taken out of the district's funds, but all those improvements within that brick and mortar, so the refrigeration, those things are permitted. Thank you. Another area that just briefly touch on, we have our community services fund. If you look at a linear projection of this, we have been, when I came to the district approximately four years ago, we had a sizable fund balance that was growing, and we've purposely under-levered just slightly. It's okay in that fund to have a little bit of fund balance to allow for fluctuations in activity. It was sizable. We've had a multi-year spend down of that, and so that decrease of approximately $65,000, that was purposeful. So I just wanted to point that out as well. Discussion only tonight. I'd be welcome if anybody has any questions, any comments tonight, or for that matter, then over the next couple of weeks. Again, we'd be happy to incorporate this into any discussion, any requests into an amended document to be brought forward for consideration two weeks from now. Brian, any other questions that you, anything else are you thinking?
Questions or comments, I think you covered it well.
Okay. Julie, any, anything from your, okay. Thanks for being here tonight.
All right. Any questions for either of these gentlemen tonight? Otherwise, this is a discussion item, and so we'll see this for action next, at our next meeting, correct?
Correct.
All right. Very good. Thank you. All right. So our next report, our next two reports, first will be Curriculum Committee and then Policy Committee. So for our Curriculum Committee report, Ms. Melanie Aragot, our committee chair, will give us a report of the committee's activities. Good evening.
All right. So the Curriculum Committee met on December 20. Unfortunately, I was not able to be there due to influenza in my house, but I did go back and watch the video and got some notes from Jill. But basically, what they went over, the curriculum and instruction department has three areas that are going through the program analysis process, four K through 12 assessments, K through 12 math, and K through 12 FIAID. Each of the areas gave an update on their current status. Each team created vision statements and their intended goals and outcomes for the analysis. Each group is going to be providing recommendations to the cabinet in January, and the cabinet will review each program analysis proposal and give feedback to each team to determine the forward actions. So basically, they're kind of all in the middle of the process right now, and we'll be hearing more probably at the next meeting, so.
Great. Any questions for Curriculum Committee? Thank you for your report. We'll turn to Joel Angert, committee chair of Policy Committee for an update.
Policy met on Thursday, January 5. We talked about the, made a few changes to the Start College Now program, early college credit program. There's policies tied to those. Got some legal advice on a policy on nepotism and talked about that. And then the superintendent made a recommendation to send one of our policies to our student government group at the high school. And this is policy 188 that needs a number change anyway, but it's the configuration of our high school. And so we're not, we're not getting into talking about putting our high schools together as one, but just thought that was kind of a neat idea. It was good timing to send that policy to our high school government group. There've been, it's been a very active group this year, and so kind of seeking input is basically on their thoughts on just the policy in general and the process of what it would take to maybe make a change to that policy down the road. So then we got into our 400 series policies, which is on students. Yes, go ahead.
Question?
Was that the students or the staff, or who's on that group? Who's in that group?
For the student government? We have staff advisors, they meet with their principals and administration, but then they have their own president, their own vice president, et cetera. So they're kind of, they've expanded their representation. I think they have over 80 students in student government, and then they go into homerooms, they share things and do that. That was one of the things that we had talked about. You know, we can take care of the technical aspects. This policy only has the parameters of like, when you're discussing it or exploring it, what do we need to be in attention to? Oftentimes, the adults are thinking one thing, but kids are going to bring up other things to examine or explore or include in that examination. So interested in their input.
I like that the kids are weighing in too, because you're right, they see things we don't always see.
I agree. I think that was a neat opportunity, and that was superintendent's idea to do that. Like I said, the 400 series policies is on, is our student, focuses on students, and we got into about 12 or so of those policies, and we'll have some changes and recommendations coming in the future. That's it.
Great. Any other questions? All right. We move to a superintendent's report. Superintendent Wimmer.
First, I'd like to start with an invitation for board members. On Thursday, February 16, the chamber hosts a leadership group. Many of you probably participated in the chamber's leadership group at one time or another. And last year, I think Nancy was a representative, as well as some other board members who are no longer with us. They asked for, and we have a kind of a roundtable, you meet with a whole group of constituents from the community that are in this chamber leadership group, and it's an education day. And then they highlight K, like 4K through all the way post-secondary options that are in our community. So there's a nice little slice in the middle of their day. We start with a 10:00 AM to 10:45 roundtable with board members. We've got some questions for board members to reflect on, and then we field some questions about being a board member. 10:45, we meet with the high school team, students, and they go on tours, and then 12 to 12:45 is lunch. So we're seeking volunteers for that, for any or all parts of that. So just take a look at your calendars. I'll send you a reminder. It's a really neat opportunity. Nancy, I don't know if you want to speak to your experience last year in any way, but it was just really nice to connect.
I think it was an excellent opportunity. If you haven't been through the leadership course, it's a great course. Chris and I were in the same class, but it's an excellent opportunity to understand what goes on with government and specifically education. Last year, we were able to, I think it was more of a prepared program, but then there was time for open questions, and then we were also able to kind of socialize and have some more one-on-one conversations during lunch, which was prepared by the students, and it was wonderful. So I would be happy to take part in that again this year. I thought it was an excellent opportunity.
Yeah, and again, I'll send out a note to all board members, but even if you can't participate in the roundtable, just as Nancy said, joining us for lunch, it's prepared by our culinary arts students, just having a great meal and getting to sit down at a table and talk with representatives from our community is always engaging. So I will remind you of that, and that's for board members. And speaking of board members, we will have a spring election. Last week, we met to publicly draw for ballots. There's three open seats, and we have six candidates running for those three seats. That will be an April 4 school board election. On the ballot, they will appear in the following order. June Krieger, Chad Temez, Kelly Lang, Nick Stewart, Bill Schultz, and Lori Schlamer Levin. Just a thank you to all those candidates. I know we've got some with us. For their willingness to serve, it's not easy, not in addition to all this work, you're doing background reading and things of that nature. So just appreciative for people to step up and into the role. As the students noted, our kids are participating in winter athletics. We had a lot of results in the last week. I'll highlight a few that they didn't get to. Just this last weekend, the East Dance Team competed in Waukesha, or I'm sorry, in Oshkosh West, and they took first and second place for duets, first place for small group, and first place for palm, jazz, and kick. And it's West who then went to New Berlin and competed. They placed first in hip hop, second in palm, third place in kick, third in jazz, and first in small group. And believe it or not, there was enough snow for the snowboard team to compete last weekend at Alpine Valley in East Troy. I don't know how. Varsity Slum, the boys took second, girls took third. The Varsity Giant Slum, both boys and girls took third place. Varsity Border Cross, the boys took fourth, and the girls took second. So over the weekend, there were a lot of tournaments, so good luck to all of our teams. We had great results in wrestling, gymnastics, swim and dive, as the students mentioned as well. So it's that time of year, it seems kind of unusual, but in January, we start thinking about enrollment for the next year. So we've got a couple enrollment events. Just as the students were forecasting, they're inviting the eighth graders up to check out the high school. We're inviting in our future 4K students. So if our community and our board members could pass the word, any family interested in enrollment and general information about our 4K program can learn more during our parent night, Thursday, January 12, 6:00 PM. It's a virtual meeting, so you can be at home. I'm sure everyone's having to serve dinner at that time, get their kids situated. It's a virtual meeting that links on our website, it's in our district newsletters, but we'll provide detailed information on the program. It's community-based partners that also offer 4K in West Bend, Newburgh, and Jackson. And then enrollment for the program begins on Monday, January 30. So check that meeting out or reach out if you have any questions regarding 4K. And just prior to break, I know everyone was probably busy, but we did publish another issue of Vantage Point. So it was a newsletter from our district with just four feature articles. It included articles on special volunteers at Fair Park, students excelling in 4H, and the high school student council's successful blood drive and holiday hope event. So you can check out that newsletter on our website. And just a reminder to our public, families often receive our newsletters directly via email, but our public can go right in, and you can sign up and subscribe. We'll also deliver them right to you otherwise. Feel free to stop by our website, they're all posted if you'd like to enjoy them periodically. Also upcoming for our students is Reality Day. Our business classes at the high school, Career and Technical Education Departments hold a Reality Day for our sophomores, and the yearly event helps to teach students about financial aspects of being an adult, such as what it's like to budget in order to pay bills and manage their other costs. And I'm sure we'll have a bigger list after the event, but it wouldn't be possible without the volunteers who man the booths that provide information on housing, insurance, banking, car loans, and much more. So just a thank you to all of them for volunteering and making it an amazing experience. It is fun to watch the kids get a dose of reality that, you know, just at 16 years old as sophomores, running around and learning, oh, those things cost more than I thought. So it's a fun day. I'm sure we'll take lots of pictures and promote on our social media accounts too. But that's all I had for updates.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent? All right, thank you for the update. Move to our discussion items then, and the first is student fees for 2023 through 2024. We'll welcome Mr. Sarno back to the podium.
Thank you. Later in the meeting's agenda, we have the 2023/24 budget calendar, and we had a realization, I believe it was about two or three weeks ago, that there's a course planning document at the high school, which is eagerly awaiting to be released, upon which we don't typically bring fees forward for discussion and approval until February, March. And so we've accelerated this just a little bit. I apologize to the board and the community as well. We have two documents that were just uploaded here before the meeting, containing some current for discussion only, recommended approval at the 23rd meeting two weeks from now. But we have fee information as well as we have a little bit of history. So I'm dating back multiple years, the different fees where we could gather some information just to take a look at a linear, look at it, the different courses, the different activities going on, certification-based, some field trip costs related to courses. But we just have a little bit of information dating back multiple years, seeing what that looks like. But this evening, what I'm happy to share is Mr. Harder, as well as myself, cabinet, we've been engaging the administration at the high schools for a discussion. And what we've done is we've brought that previous document, and there was something fairly similar last year with a 21/22 recommended for 22/23, noting the change in the purpose behind it. But we streamlined that just a little bit. This is an excerpt out of the Course Planning Guide, again, that I'd referenced. It's actually page 23 when that document is ready to be released. But it's brought forward actual fees, and we've been able, when I say streamlined it, we've gotten just a little bit more. And we've been able, when I say streamlined it, we've gotten just a little bit more, trying to, what would be the right word, cautious about what we're charging for in the interest of FAP, Free and Appropriate Education. What yet remains, and there were some art fees related to kids utilizing ceramics and jewelry-making and things like that. We've been able to pull those out, hold those fees fairly flat at the high school, the actual fees related to supplies, materials, but contain still, hold some of the actual fees that are related to trips, costs above and beyond, things that students can get and be able to use, that there's a little bit of an investment. So Family and Consumer Science, we have at Culinary Arts 1 and 2, there's a hat, a jacket, name embroidered. These are things that there's a charge because they would be taking that with them, utilizing that potentially in another job outside of the coursework related to the classes that we offer. So for consideration, again, this aligns with the full document, 60, 70 pages, details all the information. It's consistent as it breaks down all the individual courses. But this is yet what remains as an expense to students, noting areas that we waive specific costs, maybe not necessarily those things, again, that students would be taking with them, but even something like AP, Advanced Placement Exams. There is the ability to garner about a 50% discount for free-introduced families. Recommendation that that $98 anticipated cost for next year would be fully waived for any students that would like to take it, to remove barriers for them to take that advanced placement exam. There's currently, one of the titles, Title IV, has a small allocation to be reimbursed for those costs, as well as there's dollars that are inside the high school's Fund 21, which is their gift fund. There's dollars that have been brought forward through previous year's fees that could be used to offset that. But what this does is it allows those expenditures to be carried forward for the classes in an appropriate way. Mr. Harder, did you have anything that you'd like to add to that?
I think just the synopsis is, if you've never gone through registration of a high school student, you pay your overall fee, and then it just feels like you have to keep adding multiple items to the cart over and over and over. So really, a deep analysis of remove many of those fees. So the work was to remove, to hold flat on many of these fees. If you want to just highlight, there's only a couple that were kind of increasing, but it was just to remove and make that registration experience more seamless and understand the whys behind some of the charges and how they should be taken out of general fees future forward. So it was just a cleanup. We're not imposing a slate of additional new fees to families. We're intending to try and clean up the high school, and that high school coming forward first as its standalone because of having to print that course guide and students making selections. And we felt, too, that our families should know and understand and have all the information around potential costs associated with a course before its selection, so that we can have conversations to support our families. Financial hardship shouldn't stand in the way of anyone. That's why it's critical that students and families complete free and reduced lunch applications, because it's with those designations that we can adjust fees to support families based on household incomes.
One of the areas where there was an increase, the instructional material fees. So these are other fees at the bottom of the same document. We want to disclose those as well. The previous instructional materials fee, and again, a fluctuated dating back five, 10 years. Current year that we're in right now, $85, increased by $15, allows to supplement some of those other classroom fees, just in general, permitting for the dollars that can be allocated to the building to make sure that they receive an allocation that delivers the curriculum. Parking remaining flat at $125. Reached out to multiple districts, both in our area, comparable districts, interathletic conference, received a few responses back, was able to find some information. And all of these were right about in the average. There's some parking that's more, some parking that's less, some creative parking that's on and off-site. But yearbook fee, I think, is going up by $3. Currently, $57. Cost of living increased through our current vendor, that we're in our third year of that agreement, but going up by $3. Athletics, and this is something that I think people need to be aware of, $150, you pay it once and you're done. So even though a student might be taking three fall, winter, and spring sport, it's $150. Many, many of the schools will have a family max of $450, $500, but we have just a one-time fee for athletics. Co-curriculars, not a WIA-sanctioned event or sanctioned sport, but some of the clubs and some of the other co-curricular offerings, a $25 fee there. But again, those are the different areas. Those are blue there and underlined because I actually have all of that linked, hoping that families use that, because by all means, all of those free-introduced apps impact other areas, our grant funding through Title. We need to really promote that. We say that each and every year. We do make a push in the spring because that's when the snapshot occurs for that title funding for the next year, and who qual, which schools qualify and what level they qualify. But we need to really push that. We believe that there's still families that have missed out on receiving. Happy to answer. Any questions, if you had any, again, for discussion only tonight?
Questions? You remember, we'll have time to contemplate this, and we'll see it next time and ask questions in the interim, if anyone has any to contact you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move to Vehicle Purchase Amendment, which also is a Mr. Sarno topic.
Thank you. No attachment tonight. This is discussion only. I wanted to review because the auto industry has changed. Back in early September, and that was discussion, approval on October 10th. You granted permission to purchase two, or excuse me, three 7-passenger Chrysler Pacific minivans under the state of Wisconsin pricing. At that time, 10-passenger vans, no new ones were available. Used ones were very poorly priced, meaning way too expensive at that time. So even just in the last several months, we now are seeing used 10-passengers, slightly-used, a few-years-old, low-mileage, becoming available. So when I compare 3-7-passenger minivans, which really, there's only 18 passengers available, to 2-10-passenger, is still 18 passengers, and it actually fits with our use when we like to take our sports and our other co-curriculars to events. One driver, nine riders, it fits so much better. So asking for discussion, if it so moves you, I'd be more than happy to receive a recommendation to proceed with purchasing these. The interesting part about that is there isn't a state pricing to fall onto. So it would be my intent to reach out to multiple vendors, local as well as a regional area, find multiple prices, and procure two low-mileage, as low-priced as possible. This would be a competitive priced and by two 10-passenger vans. But...
Did we ever sell those school buses?
They should be listed tomorrow for the period of two weeks. Great question.
Separate from this, obviously. For fear of trying to make a decision here, since it's not an action item, I'd give you the thumbs up that I would be in support of that if this came back for action, if it suits our needs and can be competitive.
Thank you.
I would say this would probably also help with qualified drivers. If we are taking students, I mean, to get three drivers or one driver possibly, maybe two, it's probably easier to get, you know, students there with the bigger vehicles. I would say that's a better, better option.
I know that for, I had mentioned when this first came up that buying used vehicles was a suggestion that I had. I know we never buy new ones in our family because the price appreciates so quickly, and I'm in favor of this as well.
It seemed to make sense. I think you answered the question around whether or not you'd think that 3-7s, so to speak, would have a little bit more flexibility. But if the answer is, yeah, we have to haul nine people around, and so that means we have to take two of them anyway, seems a bit, you know, inefficient. So this is a more efficient solution, and at least, you know, with this preview, I would be in favor of it. We'll bring it back for, you know, for discussion. Other thoughts?
I guess I don't see a reason that we wouldn't put this through. So I feel that I would like to make a motion to approve the Vehicle Purchase Amendment tonight, so that we don't miss out on any vehicles that would maybe come up before the next meeting.
I appreciate, and I appreciate that because it sure sounds like we're all in favor. But because we posted it as a discussion item on our agenda, we can't take action on it. So, yeah.
So what he is doing, because again, you've approved that amount, what he is is going to take that amount in mind, and he can now go forward and alter your previous action. So we couldn't move forward without you saying, yes, go forward and do that. So he can enter in, get all those pieces, and then we'll be ready. So as he was scouting the market, so we're good to go, we just needed the authorization to move on it. Because the last time we met, you wanted us to move in a different direction. We're bringing you a different direction, entertain, and everyone's saying, go for it. So we're going to do that.
This will also allow me to do some legwork leading into the 23rd meeting. What I didn't want to do is have a commitment that I couldn't follow through on with a particular vehicle that we might find. So I can get, I can do a little bit of work between now and then and be able to then, upon approval, take action quickly then on the 23rd.
Sure.
So this is very helpful. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Good. Let's see. Any other items on that topic? I think we're okay there. We move then to enrollment projections for open enrollment seats.
Way back last year, we talked about the process by which we declare open enrollment seats. So you see linked for you is a recommendation, very similar. I put last year's recommendation in there for reference for the seat calculation. We, by statute, meaning the board, has to take action in January. It's a discussion item tonight. There was some additional info that we were wondering in the discussion around open enrollment, some historical numbers. We have a new person in transportation and enrollment, so we're going to let her get her feet under her a little bit before I bring back some of those numbers for you. But for tonight, I wanted to build that background on how many seats we're forecasting and the why behind that. So as you know, we project very conservatively on the student enrollment side. So we are projecting to be down a little bit from last year for the purposes of just general attrition of our students, right? We're graduating out those larger classes, and we looked at all those different models, and we find a nice conservative estimate, because we don't want to be over and under, and all of a sudden, we have to add a bunch of teachers that we didn't know about. So we're really conservative in our calculations. And the next piece that we talked about last year quite a bit was remaining K4 and K5 as entry points into the district and having unlimited space in those. So we would continue to recommend unlimited space in the entry point classrooms. The rest we're projecting would keep us in a range of anywhere from 20 to 26 as a class size average, depending on grade level bands. So it's not cutting sections and reducing it and making large classes. So in that, when you do those calculations, and again, this is at 85% of what room that you have. You calculate at that because I have to always keep space for people who might move into the district between now and when we open our doors for fall. So DPI does allow us, this is straight calculated from their calculations worksheet. So you can see, we're recommending unlimited seats for K4 and K5 as an entry point. Grade 4 would have seven seats available, and grade 9, six seats available. Certainly, families through that process, they can apply for open enrollment for up to three districts, and we encourage people to still apply. Then after that window closes, there's an additional window called the exception window that opens in July as well. And oftentimes, we're working through the summer and communicating even right up until the school year to just make sure that we're welcoming students from districts outside of ours, but doing it in a manner that maintains our optimal class size and works within our budget and our staffing allocation. So that would be our recommendation. Any questions or discussion from the board?
Questions?
You'll notice in our highlight, special education seats have to be declared separately. We look at DPI has three different caseload calculations, formulas. Emily convenes her team. We analyze all the caseloads. That's not necessarily a numbers game, because the needs of an individual student can be very large or very small, depending on what services they receive. So we do look at that separately. In K4, we'd have two seats available. And again, this is for non-residents to apply to attend our schools at no cost. We just, we're in policy talking about tuition waivers, costing, and different avenues for enrollment, so.
Can you remind me, how does it work if, let's say, for instance, there is a student that is currently open enrolled in grade 5, and they want to come back next year? Is that...
They're in.
They're in.
Once, once you're in, and you can put in a couple checkpoints along the way, but yeah, once they're accepted, they don't have to reapply. What they do need to reapply for, let's say you moved at a certain point, you missed the open enrollment window. I've moved in October. I can continue through a tuition waiver process, and then I need to apply for open enrollment. But you can see there's very minimal seats, so I can, as a district, extend that tuition waiver if they want to continue their career with us. There's other avenues for that.
Other questions? This is a discussion item as well, so we'll see this next agenda.
So this will be a future action item. Once you take action, then it gets posted publicly to our website. We let people know that that open enrollment application period is indeed open and how to go about that process. And then we start working with those families. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is Head Start Community and Self-Assessment. I believe Jamie Malsom, our Head Start administrator, is going to walk us through this item. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for the introduction. I'll start this evening with a brief overview of the Washington County Head Start. Community and self-assessment process. So as many of you, as many of you know, this is an annual process. It's an Office of Head Start requirement, and it's used to kind of kick off the planning, the program planning for the upcoming school year. The process includes planning, organizing a leadership team, designing what the survey's going to look like, deploying that survey. We usually do that around mid-November. And after we gather all the results, we analyze it, and we use those results to, you know, start making decisions as we move forward in our planning process. I'm happy to report that we had a 56% response rate this year, which is pretty incredible. It's about 22, 23% higher than we did last year. So the benefits of doing a self-assessment, kind of the why, why do we do it? It really helps us see the big picture of things. It helps us understand the possibilities and some of the challenges that the program is facing based on the changing needs in the community and in the county. It helps, it helps administration be responsive to the changing needs of the community, and then, again, to be able to use, use that information to plan for the upcoming school year. These were the five areas that were delineated as far as strengths from the assessment process, the multiple programming options that our program provides, pyramid model implementation, inclusive classrooms, and again, our community partnerships continue to grow. So making decisions. So some of the challenges that we found when we started to dig through some of the feedback was a continued need in our community for all-day programming. That's, that's kind of a newer thing that we're hearing from a lot of our families. Many years, some of the needs of the self-assessment process will kind of stay the same, but this was definitely one that stood out this year as being something that we need to really look at as a program. And feedback on opportunities. So decline in overweight and obese category for our students. So we are seeing an increase in healthy weight and an increase for, you know, parents really wanting us to support them with some of more of the behavior education at home, just like we do at school.
So Jamie, on that slide, the feedback on challenges, that last bullet point on students with traumatic experiences, I mean, you certainly want to respect students' privacy, but can you talk about that just generally? I'm not, I'm not sure what that means, and that's just, that's attention-grabbing.
Yeah. So when we look at the students that have lived through or experiencing or have experienced trauma, it's, it's loss of a parent, homelessness, you know, those kinds of pieces. that can really, you know, kind of change how their development is. And we work really hard in our program to be responsive to those needs and support the parent and the child.
Thank you.
So gathered all of that data, we looked at it as a leadership team, we looked at it at Policy Council. And these are just three areas that we're going to make sure are included in our strategic planning process for next year. But a continued focus on health, nutrition, and exercise, physical health, mental health. And our continued partnership with the FoodWise program is going to support us in that process. We're going to continue to focus our efforts on increasing parental involvement. I'm happy to report that we are really back in full swing. We have parents in the building, and it's really been a wonderful reboot and experience for us. And then the last piece is the focused efforts on finding, you know, alternative ways to extend that programming for our half-day students and wraparound care for half-day and full-day students. So meeting with some community providers and kind of seeing how that we can make that work. The Head Start Strategic Plan and Budget will be delivered to you guys on March 6th for discussion. As Superintendent Wimmer noted, we do have Parent Night this week, starting Thursday at 6:00 p.m. And that's going to kick off our Head Start and 4K enrollment for '23, '24. Thank you so much. I'm going to end with just a picture of our awesome early learning staff that, you know, makes our program a success.
Fantastic. Any questions? All right, so these two, it looks like, will come back at a future meeting for action as well.
I'll just make a comment. I've served on the Head Start Board for the past, I don't know, a year and a half, maybe. It's been, I've really, really enjoyed it. Jamie's got a really, really good, solid group of board members, and it's been very rewarding for me. You guys put together a heck of a program. As you all know, I'm not going to be on this board anymore come April. And so if you have any desire to serve on this board, we will need someone to take my place come April. I'll be happy to talk to you about it, or obviously Jamie or the superintendent. But we should be proud of our Washington County Head Start program. I think it's an honor that it's, we're the grantee of it, I think is the right term. And Jamie and the team do a great job.
Thanks, Joel.
Thank you. All right. Look forward to seeing you at our next meeting, then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sticking around for the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry. See, I should be looking ahead. Head Start bus monitor waiver. I should have noted that. My apologies. Please proceed.
So this is a routine annual request that the program makes to the board. It's a requirement from the Office of Head Start to have bus monitors on all of our routes. And it's a little cost prohibitive, it's a lot cost prohibitive, for our program to be able to do that. So in order to provide bus monitors full-time on all of our routes, we would have to look at removing staff from the classrooms where they're making the biggest impact towards, you know, student learning and positive student outcomes. So that's why this waiver is brought forth to the board every year.
My recollection is this waiver has been in place for a number of years.
It has. Yes, you're correct.
And with that, maybe just generally comment, has it presented an issue for the district not having the monitors?
It hasn't, because when there is an issue or any kind of challenging behavior that arrives on the bus, we're responsive to it right away. We'll provide a monitor to, you know, reteach, reinforce, model. We work with the parents and share social stories and things like that as well. We also provide multiple learning opportunities for the students before school begins to ride the bus with their families during the early Head Start transition meetings. They can hop on the bus and ride around to talk about and, you know, kind of explain to families what the expectations are. And then we have a representative from RightWay that comes and teaches our classrooms, you know, those bus safety pieces as well.
But this is for consideration and will be brought back at a future meeting for action.
Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you again.
All right. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. All right. On to technology projects and budget. And Tim Harder, our Director of Technology, will walk us through this item. Good evening.
Good evening, board members. Pull up my presentation here real quick. So it's that time of the year, this is an annual process that we go through, similar to what Dave Ross does in facilities, where we present our technology projects and the appropriate budget that goes with it as we plan for upgrades, updates, and replacement cycles for the 2022, '23 year, '23, '24. And as we go forward, looking into next year, we have three different categories of different updates that we will be providing and looking for as part of our budget. The first category is really the backups and the bones of our system here. It's our network, it's our infrastructure, it's our security. And just to kind of remind the public and the board, we see thousands and thousands of unique devices every single day on our network here. We are a one-to-one school district, so every student has a Chromebook. Almost all of our staff are provided with a device, either a laptop or a Chromebook. We have open Wi-Fi for our students. It's filtered, but it's open to our students to connect their phones, their staff, guests in the evening, and so forth across the district. And so we have a fair amount of traffic and a lot of work that is done regularly. We see thousands of support tickets every single school year. And so we continue to trend higher and higher in that area. And as we look at it, we know that being able to provide quality technological services here is really that backbone of our network here. And so I've been in this role almost 10 years, and a lot has changed in the amount of technology uses that we have in the classroom. And as we bring more and more technology into our school buildings, more and more stuff gets connected to our network. And if Dave Ross was here, I'd poke the bear at him a little bit of all of his HVAC stuff is now on my network. And we have security things, as we've talked about, from security cameras to door access and all those different types of pieces. So we believe in a quality and redundant network to provide access for learning and for all those operational pieces as we go across our school year. The first area that we'll be looking to upgrade this year is a second round. So we actually did some work this school year already in replacing the rest of our network switching across our school district. This is approximately 55 to 60 network switches. This is our edge switching, so what you would see out in our school buildings, providing that access back to the computer that's driving this presentation right here. We have some network switches in our disaster recovery center. So one of our schools is designed as a disaster recovery center. If we did lose our main campus at that point in time, so we'd have to replace those switches. And then we also have a virtual desktop cluster that we utilize to provide virtual desktops both in district and for our students to learn at home in the evening so they can access very specific software related to often around areas in business ed and tech ed. So if they're working on Autodesk or something, and they want to work on that homework at home, or they were absent, that's something that we went to zero 100 on due to COVID, to be able to provide that for them. Those pieces of equipment are eligible for what is called E-Rate. E-Rate is a federal program run through USAC that we apply for every school year. There are two categories that we apply for funding for. One is for funding for our internet services. So there's a service category, and then there's a hardware category, which we would apply for here. If we are granted funding for this, we can receive up to 50% of eligible costs. So the federal government may give us back half of that cost when we're done. They don't give us every little component that goes with there, but they do provide that opportunity for that. So we would go out to, after approval of this package, we go out to bid in spring, and then when we buy, we get that reimbursement back at that point in time. The second area of updates is, is we have some upgrade work to do in our archiving and backup system. So we run both cloud data here and some local storage here, so we have to back up on a regular basis. Some of our systems require a backup every 15 minutes, some of them are nightly, some of them are weekly. But we're looking at both a system upgrade, a software upgrade, and then with that cost comes the renewal piece that's out multiple years. And so that will take care of all of our software updates at that point in time. We have some servers that we need to replace in our disaster recovery site. So if we do lose our main campus, we would be able to run the operational functions of the school district at that point in time and still have access to that data. Every year, we do some internal and external wiring across the district to try to keep up. That's from anything from installing new equipment to wires that go bad and so forth over time or may get snipped in another project or nicked. We have our storage area network, whereas basically think of that as our large hard drive that stores all of our data here locally. That is due for an upgrade and a renewal on the service and the warranty on that. And then the last system is, is we will upgrade our phone software system and then get a renewal out of that process at the same time. So any questions on the network side of that or any of the equipment that goes with it before I move on?
Do all of these costs that you have on here, are these estimates from purchases you've made in the past and feel pretty confident about them?
Yeah, so they are estimates, but we will go out to bid. So USAC, the federal E-Rate piece, has its own set of rules. We actually apply them to many of our purchasing policies here, so we will go out to bid to get our best pieces with that. Some of them are pure just upgrades. We have an ongoing phone system vendor that we work with. These are ballpark budgetary figures, so we try to bid out what we can and reduce that cost down. We also look to take every project and see what we can then bring in-house. So as we expand the knowledge of our own staff, so I have a phenomenal group of staff who help not only put this together, but maintain what we're doing every day. When we do our phone system work, we have a computer technician, Doug, who manages our phone system here. If there's pieces I can pull out and have him do locally, we'll actually reduce that cost at that point in time.
Thanks.
All right, then I'll move on to the next piece. The next category is really our end-user devices. What you see at the end, the users interacting with on a regular basis. We have a regular replacement cycle here for our Windows devices. Our staff, all of our teaching staff, administration, some of our instructional texts are provided, Windows laptops or Chromebooks for aides. We are looking to replace about 120 of those devices this year. The cost on end-user devices has climbed immensely over the last five years. COVID was great in creating a high amount of demand for mobile devices, and we have not seen that caught up yet. We are now actually have moved, we went from when I started, a seven-year cycle, down to a five-year cycle. We've actually pushed up to a six-year cycle as the equipment has become a little bit more standardized and less moving parts inside of laptops today, so working to extend those pieces out. And then we always buy an extended warranty where we can either repair or send that out to get us past that first couple of years when we see those bigger items that may pop up. And that's not a huge cost with it, but it also helps us in our warranty process. We'll look to change out student desktops. So we still do have a few computer labs at our high schools. Primarily, they are desktops in tech ed. We also have some Windows laptops up in business ed, but this year, we would look to replace some of our desktops that exist within our tech ed labs, both at the high school and at Badger Middle School, running some of that specified software. Every year, we have our one-to-one program. So we are on a cycle where every kindergartner, fifth grader, and ninth grader is the new year. So kindergartners, when they get their device, they keep their device for five years. They trade that in, and then they get a new device in fifth grade. They keep it till their ninth grade year, ninth grade year, they get a new device until they graduate at that point in time. The cost that you see up there is not just the specific Chromebook that goes with it. It includes the devices, the cases that go with it. So we have a mandatory always-on case that our students utilize here. We purchased an extended warranty that now also allows us to fix our devices on-site, where we get paid a fee for each device that we fix here. That actually becomes a revenue stream for the school district at that point in time. So my staff has gone through the certification process of that, and we're looking to expand that to more technicians. With that, it also includes all the things like asset tagging and setting up and putting it into the Google console and bulk shipping and all of those different pieces that go with it. So it's more just than the Chromebook itself. It also covers all of our Google licensing that goes with the device and the students' accounts that we utilize and staff every year. And then often people ask, so what do you do with, you know, when you have 1,000 Chromebooks come in every year? What do you do with all of those? We actually package them up here, and then we have multiple vendors who will provide a bid for us, and we bulk sell them out. And so we don't go to public auction with them per se like we may with a couple of buses, but we will bid that out to multiple vendors who will give us the best deal, and then they take that. And typically, they're buying them for parts at that point in time, but we do recoup costs for those. We have $60,000 allocated. We have a high amount of copier replacements this year. About four years ago, we took our copiers off of lease, and we went to a purchase model here. We are a large enough district to save money. Instead of leasing our copiers, we buy them. We pay per-click cost for every copier print made. That covers our service and our toner and our staples and all of that. But we do not lease anything but two large printers or copiers, excuse me, that we have it up in our high school in a copy center that we have here. And so we put those on a replacement cycle here. Sometimes we will push six, seven years on those devices. We are just actually working on the high school this year, so that's why you see a higher amount coming in at that point in time. Digital signage is a new piece that you see come forward on the end-user device, and it's really twofold. Number one, over the years, we have added a lot of TVs with a device that runs a presentation. So as you walk through the high school, you may see that. You may see that outside the library at Badger, you may see that at Silverbrook in the cafeteria. We are deploying a new system that allows us to centralize, manage all of that. This comes with the devices, all of those pieces that I can create those things, do that in a cloud-based thing, and send it out to all of the devices instead of having to go to each TV and do that. We've also allocated money. We have an external sign outside the West High School entrance that's tied in with Acuity Insurance, who had donated money for the fieldhouse. We need to do some upgrades to that, both to the physical hardware of that and the software that goes with it due to security reasons at that point. And then we have an ongoing cost of trying to keep up classroom display updates as projectors and TVs go. We try to put those in as often as we can and work on those. And we are very blessed that we actually do that work in-house at this point in time. So Dave's team and facilities wires that for us, which helps, keeps our cost down. So any questions on the end-user device piece? And then the last area this year in terms of budgetary pieces and project planning, we are going to, it's about that time. We've had the same website provider for about six years. We've gone through two different versions of the website in the time that we've had that. So we will go out for RFP this spring potentially and look at a new website platform and hosting piece with that. This cost does include multiple years of hosting, and it will include the design work that's needed upfront for that. So we would look to go out to multiple different vendors as we look at that. Jen, myself, and others agreed it's time to go for that. We were looking at that originally last spring. We just did not have the capacity to pull that off at that point in time. The other thing that we are going to look at providing for our staff, and we have staff using free versions of this in different tools, is we are going to look for a texting system that we can use for everybody across the district. So we have the ability right now, we're already playing with it. When we have a snow day or a digital learning day, instead of it being, knock on wood, we had one of those already. We can't do another one this year. You know, instead of not just sending out the voice, you know, you get the nice message from this Wimmer, and you get the email from us, but we also can text out of there. And so we're looking at options with that. But what we're really looking for here is the ability for the school, the classroom teacher, the athletic coach, to create their class list. And there's multiple vendors that are out there, and I'm not going to name specific vendors. But we would look at this as a new, broad-on communication tool that we can utilize for our, not only communicating with our parents, but also for our coaches to communicate with athletes, something that is archived, something that we can, you know, go back and look at if we need to for a variety of reasons at that point in time. So we would go out to RFP for that and then bring that forward. That is purely a very large, or not sorry, large, but a budgetary number at that point in time. The RFP process will decide all of those features, which will help fluctuate that number when we get done at the end. Questions?
Question on that. I know we have some families probably more, you know, because I'm old, so I'll say it. The younger families who probably appreciate that opportunity much more so than emails would. So I know many of those apps, for instance, you know, it's just one-way. You know where you're texting from, so I'm assuming that this would allow two ways. So a student or a parent could respond back to the teacher or the coach.
We would look at a system where a coach could send out, hey, athletic practice has changed tonight due to weather. We're now inside in the gym, but it's at 8:00 at night. There'd be a way for that athlete to communicate back and forth. Sometimes it's text, sometimes it's by putting the app on the phone also that goes with it. But looking at ways to provide that two-way communication, something that's archival, no different than an email when we send here at that point.
Sure. And then I would, same with teachers, being able to communicate with parents. That parents would have that ability for a two-way. Okay.
And then we don't have to worry about teachers using their own personal cell phones or anything else like that. And we would treat it just like we treat email as a communication tool at that point.
Thank you.
I just have a question now that you're through all this. Is there a way to maybe integrate some of these students and kind of give them credit for helping out with some of these projects?
Yeah, so we actually, so that's a great question. We actually have students who work for us. So as part of my other role, I do career education and CTE. We started three years ago hiring our own youth apprenticeship student. We started three years ago hiring our own youth apprenticeship student. And so we have at least one high school student that works for us every year who comes in and does work for us. Years ago, that typically was, I would hire you to come in and do clean devices in the summer and some of those types of things. It's actually now a year-round program that has curriculum. Students leave with a youth apprenticeship certificate at that point in time. We also sometimes have student workers. We're actually toying and starting a pilot program right now where we're looking at that with middle school students. And so we'll have a middle school student who's going to come do some work with us here one day a week to see if that's something we can sustain in fixing things. And so we like the idea of not just doing the basics of cleaning devices and popping labels on, but we want our students who come to work for us to leave with some skills that maybe, hey, IT is my thing. Maybe it's not, or something that I could apply when I go on to college. So one of our past students is actually just applying for a job working at the help desk at the university they're at and so forth. But we do provide those opportunities for our kids.
Just seemed like good, you know, real-world experience.
Yes, absolutely. And as we look for youth apprenticeship partners, we have multiple in-house. We have students working in our restaurant here. We have students working in our school store, but this is a great opportunity for our IT kids to do that.
Great. Other questions?
So the total of the whole nut, how's it compared to prior year?
We're a little high. So Jen and I were talking about that this morning. We're a little high right now in the budgetary numbers. We want to see where we come through. We know that that E-rate piece also helps out at that half-off at that point in time. At, you know, at $350,000, if we can get back half of that, that actually puts us back to about where we are at that point. We are also working on ways to reduce the cost of some of our services. We've changed over our phone lines to a different type of service. We're actually looking at condensing some of our internet connections, looking at a partnership with a couple of other places, and trying to reduce some other expenditures that go with it at that point in time. But we are a little heavy this year on equipment, but we see that trend in our projections as a couple of bubble years every once in a while.
Good. Anything else? All right, so we will see this for consideration for board action at our next meeting?
You bet. Thank you very much.
Excellent. I think you're helping with the next item. If I have this right.
We don't have a presentation for that one, though, right?
Software to support rightsizing the district. Joined presentation by Superintendent Wimmer and Mr. Harder.
Some shared expertise. So one of my pieces of the puzzle is enrollment management and looking around. Dave's presented around the facilities, efficiency, and all those. And we know that we have some room to be more efficient. We can take some campuses offline. One of the directors from the board is, when you do that work, please prepare and present the impact of taking any location offline. And we've also analyzed, we know we need to build something in Jackson. Is it a traditional school? Is it a K-8 model? What's going to help us with long-term enrollment management? So you need some software pieces to help you with that. We have to look for enrollment right now, and we have to look all the way out, see what's buildable, where it is, where our current location is. There's multiple impacts in doing that enrollment work. So actually, Andy with his peers has been looking around who's using what. Tim and his peers, as well as myself, and looking at different vendors and companies. One is rising to the top of the field as really the industry standard, which is a Guide K-12. We already use Frontline, so it's the extension of a module on that that would allow us to do that work. And that certainly comes with a cost. So that's why we wanted to put this on the radar and talk about why, because it can seem like a pretty big price tag when you're looking at $30,000 to do that work over the year-and-a-half time. But you have to map every single house and all the students, whether they're here or not, and all those demographics and all those pieces around future enrollment to it. So you're looking at some setup costs around $5,500. You're looking at the remainder of this year, looking at about $7,000 for the remainder of the school year, and then a commitment for next year, roughly around $17,000 there for that. So just looking at kind of what's needed, there's going to be hard decisions ahead, right? And when you get down to looking at closing a school and doing that, I need to be able to have a software system that's compatible and nimble and does the job I need it to. Because what's going to happen is, when you start, again, we're going to create a plan, the impact of taking every single campus offline and what that would do, and then we're going to start narrowing into recommendations. And then you're going to have everyone coming up with an idea, and you've got kind of a go-team that needs to explore what would that look like. And you have to be able to draw that around that new enrollment zone. What does that yield now? What does it yield in the future? All those pieces. So you just have to be nimble because there's a lot of exploration. Even when you know something's not going to work, you still have to explore it, do the work, get the data, and then count it out for X reasons. So that's kind of those pieces. Tim really can speak to some of the software because it's like, is there anything else we should be looking at, exploring, has a different price point? And so that's why the co-presenting with Tim's expertise.
So I jokingly always call this the GIS software on steroids. So it is a GIS software where I can put, where anybody can put addresses, and we can load that to it. But it's really about that ability Jen talked about to fluctuate to different situations. But it's not just about demographics. We can look at some of our own data and start to decide, is this appropriate for a K-6 school, a K-5 school? And you can fluctuate and make it much easier versus having to manually redraw things all over the place. And the more data that you can put into a system like this, the more realistic you can get at predicting some of the trends that we may see in the future. So we could even try to take some of the trend data that Dave is seeing through the population analysis study, put that into there, start to predict, okay, this area, the district started to go down, but all of a sudden, I don't know, south part of West Bend has a huge building boom. What would that look like for our layout of our district in the future? And it provides that fluidity that goes with it versus just saying, here's some addresses, and we're drawing a line around it at that point in time. And do a little bit of that scenario piece on the spot versus having to always come back and say, okay, let me go and do eight hours' worth of work and come back with a presentation at that point in time.
And the reality, you know, you saw Tim's budget and the network and all the things that they manage. The reality is, I need a turnkey system. Someone else needs to load the data, do that. I just need to be given the keys to drive it so that we can do that work. So this software would do that. But again, right now, we're really looking at one, almost like a source vendor, only one's rising to the top to give us the capacity that we need. So we wanted to have that discussion tonight before we really start to kind of negotiate. These were just some initial quotes and exploration, just where the board's thoughts are, how we move this forward before we take any action on the item.
So these are definitely questions this board has asked, and so I think it's good that administration's taking a look at ways to answer those questions. And it's a lot of money. But on the other hand, I also, I'm not surprised by the price tag because it sounds like it's fairly specialized software. The question I'd have is, are there ways we can work with the vendor so that we don't end up with buyer's remorse? You know, we plunked down $30,000, we get it, and oh, darn, it doesn't do everything that we thought. I mean, I'm assuming they won't give us the software for a year so we can use it free and solve all our problems. But are there ways that, in due diligence, something we can do to test, or we can try it for a week or something of that sort? I would just give that advice. I don't know that you necessarily have to answer that question unless it's something, you've done it already. But that's one thing that I would encourage. You'd hate to have buyer's remorse on a $30,000 piece of software.
One of our pieces was looking at actual users, who's using it now. I used it years, like a decade ago when I was in Waukesha and doing enrollment management work there. It certainly has evolved since then. So they gave me some demo pieces to see how that's evolved. And then we were talking about who are their current clients? Are they satisfied? How long do they keep this piece, you know, to execute on the work that's needed? How their build guarantee is within 30 days. They have you up and running from the time you sign on versus like it's a, you know, large project, and six months from now you get to start it up. It's, once you sign on, we're go. So those were some of the exploration pieces we did. And then certainly, Tim's expertise is around the data management of that and the security of that and those pieces, so.
Great. No, I think checking with references is a great way to proceed. Other questions or thoughts?
What's the timeline on this? Like, how long will we need this for? Or is this an ongoing thing?
So it depends on the decision-making of the board. So when we're able to kind of turnkey it, and then I present the initial report, probably later in spring, because I need some time to do that work with each one, then probably over the course of the next year, the board's going to have to make decisions around which campus, which model, and what to do. Barring our ability to make decisions in a thoughtful manner, it always becomes really hard when schools are involved, and everyone loves their school, and that's a great issue to have. But sometimes they can get very emotional. But barring, you know, anything, we clear decisions within that following year, and we can probably sunset it.
So this, and this is the rest of this year and next year?
Correct. It's for both.
Yeah, John, we don't expect this to become a regular part of my budget as I budget for software every year.
My comment is very similar to John's. I bought a gym membership last year, and you can clearly see I didn't use it. I'd be in favor of purchasing this if we're ready to do the work. And if we have a license for something for the remainder of this year and we don't use it, that's a bad use of taxpayer dollars. So if we're ready to do the work, I'd be in favor of producing this.
And I can include a little more info around Guide K-12 specifically. I can send that to the board. But we just wanted to kind of know and understand and have a path. I'll send some of those pieces that they've given me as well. It might make you think of new questions in the interim. But otherwise, then we'd bring this back for formal action with an actual quote from the vendor in those pieces so we can move forward. And as we said, we've got readiness to make it happen.
Great. Other questions? Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. I believe that was, that was our last discussion item. We are now on to action items. And the first action item is out-of-state travel, Winter Guard, and Dr. Jill Reese, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, will walk us through this item. Good evening.
Good evening. Hold the right document here. Okay, so we have another out-of-state travel proposal that I'm bringing forward. It's for Winter Guard. And the proposal is actually linked in this document. So I'm not going to open it, but I'll just show you where it is, just in case you want to take a look at it, and you might have already. What they're basically asking for is six days of total travel. The travel is to Illinois, and part of the reason they're asking for that is there is no Winter Guard competition in Wisconsin anymore. And so they travel to high schools in Illinois to have these competitions. And Winter Guard is basically the equivalent of Color Guard, but it's indoors. So they have five Saturdays and one Sunday they're asking to travel. Overall, the cost per student ranges from $30 to $35 per trip, and then that's for the busing with Go Right Way and some of those pieces. And then in addition, if they need, like, to purchase money for food or anything like that, some spending money. This includes 33 students and 12 chaperones. And like I said, we do use district transportation services to do this. The reason we have this on for action and not discussion is because we found out about it recently, and their first date is January 28th. So any questions about Winter Guard travel?
And these dates would be a trip down and back? In other words, hotel stay?
In the same day, correct.
In the same day, so no hotel stay planned?
Right.
They leave at like 4:30, 5:00 in the morning and come home at 11:00 at night. My daughter's in this program. It's a great, great group, and they are an extremely competitive group. And they go down to these competitions and do quite well. So.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's a great organization.
Other questions? I move to approve the out-of-state travel for Winter Guard as presented. Is there a second? Thank you, Nancy. There's a second. Motion and second to approve the out-of-state travel. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reese.
They all appreciate it, and I do too. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Our next action item, the district budget calendar for 2023 through 2024. Welcome, Mr. Sarno back.
Thank you. Attached to this agenda item is the document. I think we're up to four pages now. Even in the few years that we've brought this forward and formalized this, it's continued to evolve. Even tonight, as mentioned earlier, we'll make sure that we bring that high school fees earlier next year. And it's even noted on my document. Had the opportunity to present this earlier for discussion. There's been no recent communication. So the original document that was presented a couple of weeks ago remains. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sarno?
I think this is a useful document. Thank you for presenting it. I think it's good for newer and older board members alike, so to speak. Hearing no additional discussion, I would move to approve the district budget calendar 23, 24 as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Joel. Motion and second to approve the calendar as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our action items. So we are on to future agenda items. Our board meeting calendar. So our upcoming meetings, all to be held here at the Education Service Center. January 17, Curriculum Committee, 8:30 a.m. January 23, regular board meeting, 5:30 p.m. January 31, Policy Committee, 4 p.m. On February 6, regular board meeting at 5:30 p.m. Any other items? I don't think there are any other to add to the calendar. This remains current. Always watch, though, for the postings in case there are, there are changes between now and the dates of these meetings. We'll move then to items for follow-up and communication. Are there any items for follow-up or communication that anyone wishes to bring forward at this time?
I would, I would just like to, I guess, put this out there. If we have any information on the $200,000 that we set aside for the extra security stuff, have we moved forward with that since our work meeting with the chief and everybody?
We have not moved forward on no expenditures or anything. We just heard those pieces. It would come back as another discussion and agenda to start planning for, once you've had that background.
When do we plan on that?
We can put that on as soon as you are ready as a team. So I'm sure the board president and I can schedule that in with Andy around those pieces.
Good suggestion. All right. Any other items for follow-up and communication? All right. Then by my count, we've accomplished 25 agenda items tonight. And the 26 is, we have an item to consider an executive session. So I would make a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take any such action as necessary based on its discussion, namely compensation and employment. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion and second to adjourn into executive session. Final discussion. I think to adjourn into executive session, correct me if I'm wrong, do I need to take a roll call vote? That's what I thought. Thank you for the reminder. All right, I will call the roll. Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Swiger quotes, yes. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Ms. Aragat?
Yes.
And Ms. Justman?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. We are now adjourned into executive session. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Have a good evening.